Commissioners, can you hear me? Just nod your head, okay? Welcome to the Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, regular meeting of the Glen County Island's Planning Commission. This meeting is being held via video teleconference. The public has simultaneous access to the meeting. The meeting will be streamlined for public viewing through the Glen County Board of Commissioners Facebook and YouTube pages. Commissioners, remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Staff will control the PowerPoint presentation. Please do not scroll or control the slides on the screen during the presentation. At this time, I'll have, I'll call the roll. I'll call your name if you will confirm that you are here, and we'll go down the road. Commissioner Brock?
Here.
Commissioner Dipolito?
Here.
Commissioner Duncan? Commissioner Duncan?
Commissioner Duncan has not joined the call yet.
Okay. Commissioner Torres? I saw him run out of the room. Commissioner Usri?
Here.
Here.
Here?
Here.
Commissioner Rooks?
Here.
Missed it. Commissioner Torres back yet? Yes, you're here. As Commissioner Duncan joined us?
No, sir, I've not seen him join yet.
All right, in the other room is Commissioner Capindig.
Thank you, I'm here.
Secretary Janet Lovin?
Here.
Staff, Stephanie Leaf?
Here.
Staff, Will Worley?
I'm here.
Also present agents for application ZM 4790, Zach Harris? And Joey Strength, I think they raised their hands, so that's fine, thank you. Meeting procedures are, the planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to Glen County's own ordinance and other applicable regulations in conformance of the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Advocates shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is a responsibility applicant to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public hearings, public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments should be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position and time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimonies if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. First item on the business on our agenda tonight is approve the minutes of the joint special call meeting held August 10th, 21, 2021, and approve the minutes of the Island's Planning Commission regular meeting held on August 17th, 2021, subject to any necessary corrections. Is there a motion to approve? Yes?
Oh, yes, so Rooks, I move that the minutes be approved from the Tuesday, August 10th, 2021 meeting.
A second. All right, there's a second and discussion. All in favor of the motion, I'll call your name. Commissioner Brock?
Approved. A second.
Commissioner Dipolito?
Approved.
Commissioner Rooks?
President.
Commissioner Duncan, is he on yet? Commissioner? Rooks?
Torres.
Torres?
Approved.
Mr. Usri?
Approved.
Mr. Willis, approved.
No, I want to do for August.
We need a motion for August 17th, 2021, if someone can make that motion, please. So, Mr. Chair. All right, Commissioner Usri made the motion. There a second?
One second.
Rooks, Commissioner Rooks seconded. All right, Commissioner Brock?
I was not in attendance at that meeting, so I'm not sure if I can.
You abstain, you abstain.
I abstain.
Commissioner Dipolito?
Approved.
Mr. Duncan? Commissioner Rooks?
President.
Mr. Torres?
Approved.
Mr. Usri?
Approved.
Mr. Willis, approved. All right, you've got those votes now. All right, thank you, this is not real easy to go through this, but we're going to do the best we can. First item on the agenda tonight is ZM, second item is ZM 4790, St. Simon's North End Plan Development District Amendment, Community River Access. Request for an amendment to the St. Simon's North End Plan Development District, ZM 1222, for approximately 3.42 acres within Frederica Township to allow community river access in a community dock on two lots located at 356 Pike's Bluff Drive, parcel number 04-13463, and 348 Pike's Bluff Drive, parcel number 04-13464, St. Simon's Island. Joey Strength and Zach Harris, Hunter McLean agents for SS-FR LLC owner and advocate. Ms. Leaf? You'll present this.
Good evening, commissioners, this is Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 4690, St. Simon's North End Plan Development, and they are requesting a community river access as an allowed use within this PD along the Frederica River. So, this, um, this project includes two different lots, and this is off of Pike's Bluff Drive on the northern end of Frederica Township. So, these are the two lots, and this is the Frederica River here. This is an area you'll be able to show where these lots sit at the curve of the river. Uh, there's an existing individual private dock that does extend off of one of the lots, as you can see here. So, it's approximately 3.41 acres total that they are requesting that are currently plotted as two separate lots. The text amendment they're requesting does only apply to these two lots. This does not apply to the rest of Frederica Township, it's only these two lots. Uh, they are asking to have a community dock and community river access as an allowed community recreation use. Uh, they are including language in their proposed text that would, uh, basically connect this to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources requirements. And, um, currently, the Georgia Department of Natural Resources defines a community dock, um, and this is, it differentiates between uh, individual docks and marina, and marinas, and several different uses. But a community dock specifically is defined by DNR as a dock that's 500 linear feet or less of docking space, which is a subdivision or community recreational amenity, providing water access for residents, and which may or may not entail a fee. Uh, currently, the St. Simon's North End Plan Development text, um, does allow a community dock on Jones Creek, and this was, um, in the area where Cannon's Point is located, and, um, this was in the PD from, you know, many years back when the PD was first, um, originated, when Cannon's Point was, um, basically planned out as a, as a residential community. And so, of course, as we know, St. Simon's Land Trust has acquired the property since then, and it is now preserved. So, um, and so currently, that, that's really the only spot where a community dock would be allowed is along Jones Creek, which is mostly along Cannon's Point within the PD. So, this would allow it on the Frederica River. Uh, the comprehensive plan does show this is low-density residential, and a community neighborhood amenity is, is considered in keeping with that. And this is, uh, just a part of their zoning exhibit, this is the plat for Frederica Township. They lost, these are the two lots, lots 202 and 203 right here. So, this is the master plan for St. Simon's North End. Uh, their master plan is not proposing to be amended, because the plan itself will stay the same. Um, this area is considered Track Three of Pike's Bluff, uh, and they do allow community recreation, as you can see in this top left-hand box. So, the North End PD is separated into these kind of different tracks. So, really, the, the language of the PD text would be amended, but the master plan itself stays the same. So, under Track Three of Pike's Bluff, um, these are, are some of the land uses that were, um, anticipated for this area. So, as you can see, it's a wide variety of uses, um, recreational and residential, um, single-family and multi-family. And then, in the permitted uses, but within the current plan development text, I just wanted to highlight where it currently talks about the community dock on Jones Creek. So, uh, community river access is allowed, but it's limited to Jones Creek. And this is where the language would, would change to also allow it on, uh, Frederica, and, um, refer to the DNR restrictions for a community dock. And just additional permitted uses that are allowed. And this is the proposed language. Uh, we did receive, uh, two written public comments, um, from Mr. Walter Mueller, as well as, uh, Mr. Hawk, that both of them do have property within Frederica Township. Um, primarily, their concern is, um, how this would affect the township. Uh, did you have concerns, and, uh, we're hoping for additional time for the H2A to discuss the project and the proposal. And these comments were also forwarded to the Planning Commission. And these are your possible actions. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and both Joey Strength and Zach Harris from Hunter McLean are here representing the applicant tonight.
All right, commissioners, do you have any questions of, uh, staff in this item? Um, I have, raise your hand if you're on line and.
I have, I have a question, uh, there is a limit on the length of the, of the length of the dock on the waterway, is there not? Five, 500 feet, I think I read, is that correct?
That is correct, that is the, the current restriction with DNR.
And, and I guess, I guess the other question, just, just in general, is the, is the extent of the dock confined to the extension of the side property lines of the two lots? In other words, they, they won't be allowed to extend the dock in front of the adjacent lots, would they? Just a question, and, and that may be something for the applicant to answer. It's just, uh, I noticed with 500 feet, there's a possibility of going past, past the extension of their property lines on either side. It could extend in front of the adjacent lots, it's just a, just a question, maybe the applicant has an answer.
Yeah, that is a question, and yeah, an applicant may have, um, more information on that, and that, that would all be part of that, the DNR approval, so that would not come back to us in terms of the actual, um, you know, dock construction, uh, but the applicant may have, um, some answers to that.
All right, are there any other questions from staff or staff?
Okay, in one area, I noticed it said, oh, that's the roots. In one area, I know, um, it states that it would be for neighborhood use. Then another area, I know it says for, um, community, um, use, but then it's limited to a particular area, I think it said, um, what was it? Um, I want to say, was it township? Yes, then it would be limited, uh, within Frederica Township. So, is it, okay, I guess I need you to define what you mean about neighborhood use, community use, but yet limited to Frederica Township area.
Sure, um, yeah, that applicant's, um, agents had stated that this, um, this dock would primarily serve, um, residents of the Frederica Estates, which you may recall a few months ago, um, they, they're, they resoned to allow family estates. Um, in Frederica Township, it's the long, that long stretch, Long Frederica, um, Frederica Road. And so, you, those properties do not have, um, any waterfront properties, and they don't have water access. So, that, that is the intent, is for this community dock to serve the, the residents of the Frederica State lots. However, um, yeah, I, I'm not privy to, to what details may be worked out, um, or available to, you know, other residents of the area. So, that would be something that, you know, would be a private matter, they would work out. But I think that's a good question, I mean, I think that the scale of a community dock is really, um, intended to be a, a neighborhood amenity, um, and, and it differentiates from a commercial marina, which is considered to be a very separate use, and is treated very separately from, by DNR. And if it's a commercial marina, you know, that would be a, a definitely a different conversation about, um, traffic, and, and who would be, you know, coming to that marina to use it. But I know that applicants can, can add to that in terms of what their, you know, full plans are for this area.
Okay, Commissioner Brock, may I have a question?
Uh, yes, um, so mine is along the same lines, but I was just curious if, uh, this is for the state residents only, or if it is for the rest of the Frederica Township. So, that would be a question for, I guess, for the applicants.
Right, we'll have an answer to that. Any other questions of staff at this time? Uh, let me ask, is Commissioner Duncan on line? If you'll let us know.
Yeah, um, Chair Willis, Ms., Commissioner Duncan has been trying to, um, join the call, and he says he's tried several times and having some technical issues.
All right, well, hopefully he can get those worked out, so. All right, there's no other questions, we'll ask, uh, Mr. Harris and Mr. Strength, if you'll come to the microphone and identify yourself, and, uh, make your presentation this time.
Thank you, Chairman Willis. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
I, my name is Zach Harris, I'm an attorney with Hunter McLean. Uh, with me this evening is my colleague Joey Strength, uh, also an agent on this project, and, uh, Michael Collins, uh, representing, uh, the applicant, SSIFR. Thank y'all for letting us come for you tonight, and I appreciate staff's comments and the questions of, uh, the planning commissioners. Uh, just briefly, uh, we're just asking for your consideration of a very minor zoning change to essentially relocate, uh, an existing permitted use, a community dock, from, uh, one part of the district to the other part of the district. Uh, as staff pointed out, the, um, Jones Creek, uh, the portion of the district that abuts Jones Creek, where the community dock concept was originally contemplated, is preserved in perpetuity. And so, we are seeking to, uh, relocate that use, although this amendment would not affect any other property other than the amendment property, uh, which is two lots, lots 203 and 202, uh, to allow an already permitted use to be utilized, uh, in a different location on the Frederica River. Uh, to the specific questions, uh, the commissioners raised the property lines, uh, question by Mr. Usri. Uh, the, uh, sort of the concept of the dock, uh, that the applicant is contemplating presently is, as staff pointed out, there's an existing private recreational dock on lot 203. Um, the concept is generally to extend what's already out there, uh, to allow it to be used and permitted as a community dock, which is a defined term under, uh, under the DNR regulations. Uh, and, and so that would extend, uh, up the Frederica River, uh, to the permitted length. Uh, currently, the concept is a minimal extension of, you know, between 150 to 200 feet, depending on need and feedback from DNR staff. Um, it's not a, it's not a large project by any means. And, and so, it would extend, um, I guess what you would consider to be a, sort of an extension of property lines over lot 202, which is also owned by the applicant and a part of this application. To, uh, Commissioner Rooks' question on community versus neighborhood use, uh, the applicant, SSIFR, has been in constant contact with the Community Association of Frederica Township, uh, with the developers out there, Frederica Development Group, uh, and, and in coordination with them, has advised property owners out there in an email earlier this month, uh, what their proposal is, what the development concept is generally for, uh, the Frederica Estates property. So, uh, initially, the proposed use is, is for this to be a private recreational amenity for a private residential neighborhood of the Frederica Estates. And, uh, the stakeholders out there, Fredericka Development Group and the, uh, Community Association are, have committed to identify, uh, the feasibility of adding additional users to that within the Frederica Township, uh, greater development. But at least initially, uh, while they sort out, um, what the use patterns are and what the demand will be on their contemplated development out there, the initial use is proposed only for, or at least primarily for Frederica Estates. So, I asked to. So I asked to the community dock, that's a defined term under state regulations promulgated by DNR. That's why that term has significance under the law as to what can be put out there, community dock versus marina, for example, which the applicant is not seeking as part of any of this. So a community dock would be something that DNR would have to approve through the shore protect, or through the Coastal Marshlands Protection Committee. As to Commissioner Brock's question on estates versus township, again, at least initially, the primary users will be the Frederica Estates property owners. And then they revisit that later. So again, just to conclude, and obviously if there are any other follow-up questions, we're glad to speak to that. But we are essentially seeking a very minor relocation of a already permitted use in the district so that we can have community river access to Frederica River.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Harris?
I do, Chairman. Mr. Harris?
Go ahead.
Michael Torres. I noticed in the plan development text, it stated there'd be a maximum of 50 slips, but that a community dock is 500 feet of docking space maximum. I don't understand how that works. It's only 10 foot per slip.
The 50-slip language is existing language under the text. The community dock would be a structure that's permitted by DNR. The zoning, so as I'm sure you are familiar, zoning is a required check, a required component of any marsh application where you're seeking to permit a community dock. You have to make sure that what you're trying to do is permitted in the zoning district where you're trying to do it. So this is a required component in order to get any structure out there permitted. So again, this is a low-intensity private amenity for a very low-intensity residential development out there. So I don't know that there's any intention of having any specific allocation of slips or any sort of dedicated use out there. But to the extent that language is a concern, it is existing language and we're simply seeking to relocate the use for a community dock to these lots.
Is it going to be a 500-foot face dock, do you know? Or is it going to be, is it going to project out into the river further than it does now?
It will have a very minimal projection into the river. The concept is to take the existing dock structure that's out there, extend the floating dock upriver, and obviously, any sort of impacts into the river are going to be looked at by department staff when that permitting time comes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Usri?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. One, has there been any direct communications with the homeowners association about this proposed change?
There have been, yes. The applicant has been in almost constant contact, certainly weekly or every other day, seems like, with Frederica Development Group and the Frederica Township Community Association Board. Earlier this month, I think September 8, the Community Association, in coordination with applicant, did send out an information update to the members of the Frederica Township Community Association, generally advising them and updating them on what the development plans are, generally speaking, out there for the Frederica Estates development and for this dock amenity and rezoning. So they, owners out there, to the extent they've checked their email, have gotten information from their community association out there. And again, just reiterate, this is a, you know, the applicant has been very open with the stakeholders out there, with the Community Association, as to what their plan for this property and this rezoning project is. We've received their input and the owners out there, again, have gotten an informational update earlier this month. I did notice where there were the two public comments that were sent in to the county staff. You know, the question before you is whether, essentially, this is a reasonable rezoning request. We would certainly ask that you conclude that it is and that you support it.
Okay. I have one more question. And what's the difference between a community dock and a marina?
Well, a community dock, as we are seeking to have it permitted, is not going to have refueling capability. It's not going to have sanitary pump-out facilities. It's not going to have boat storage. A marina would have any number of those things. We are, this is, this is a very low-intensity use and it exceeds the exemption under the Marsh Act for a private recreational dock for an individual residential lot. So it is a structure that must receive a permit under the Marsh Act. And so this is the, from a zoning standpoint, this is the category that it falls under. It's not a simple fishing or crabbing dock. So it would need to be, you would have to get a marsh permit for a community dock, in this case. And the zoning needs to support that that is a permitted use on the property in the district where we're seeking to have it permitted.
One more question, one follow-up to that, is would there be any permanent dockage there? I mean, could I lease a space and keep my boat there just as long as I maintain the lease?
I don't think it's a lease concept. It's being entertained at this point. Again, this is intended to be initially owned by the applicant and then eventually transferred to a homeowners association that's going to serve the Frederica Estates development out there. There's certainly not going to be any overnight residential use or any sort of liveaboard use permitted out there.
Would there, one follow-up to that, I guess. Would there be any limitation by the DNR to lease space on that dock? I mean, would the DNR come back and say, you can't really keep boats here overnight, for instance? I mean, I would assume that you keep them overnight, but for an extended period of time, let's say.
I don't think off the top of my head that that would be a large concern of the departments as to the length that a boat would be moored there, provided it's not being used for a purpose that exceeds, or that ventures into it being a liveaboard use that is also regulated by the department.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harris, I got another question for you. I assume this is going to be used by residents as well as their guests that may arrive by water?
I think that's a fair assumption.
Will the HOA be charging for guests by boat? Well, I guess the owner, the property owner, and eventually the HOA, will they be charging for use of the dock by non-residents?
So there's no plan at this time to impose a use fee, but obviously, you know, to the extent that's not going to be prohibited, you know, I can't speak exactly to what's going to happen, whether it's going to be a use fee or not. I do know under state law, you know, a permitee of a community dock could charge a use fee. There are costs, as you well know, with anything that goes out over the water. So maintenance would be an issue. But there is no, there's no put-in or take-out ability contemplated for this use as a community dock. So there's, yeah, I guess, to specifically answer your question, I don't know at this time whether there's going to be a user fee imposed on regular use or mooring at the dock or not.
Okay. Sorry, another question. I know a lot about docks, so I'm sorry, I'm digging into the docks part. Do you know if there'll be onshore power on the docks or not for the boats to plug into?
I would think that there would be a power run to the dock, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there'll be lighting, you know, the dock must be lit from a safety standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rooks?
Okay. I noticed it stated here before when I asked the question, and you stated that residents of Frederica Township will have access to it. When you're reading this, it says that the proposed community dock would provide access to the Frederica River for owners of certain properties within Frederica Township. Therefore, there is some limitation as to who will be allowed to use the dock.
Yes, ma'am. There is a limitation that would be consistent with any limitation on any community dock in Glen County. It is not intended to be open to the general public. And as I mentioned before, you know, the initial contemplated use is primarily for owners of these Frederica Estates who, you know, who are interested in using the dock. And depending on what the usage patterns establish over time, applicant has been in communication with the Frederica Township Community Association and the Frederica Development Group out there as to the possibility of allowing sort of greater use among other residents out there. But initially, just to reiterate, you know, this is a private amenity being developed on the applicant's property as part of the larger development of the Frederica Estates. And that's the, at least initially, is going to be the predominant use of the property.
Okay. I was not speaking in reference to the general public. I understood it, but I was just concerned when it says properties limited to certain property owners within the Frederica Township. So there is a great deal of limitation there. So it's, to me, I'm not clear as to who would be allowed even within the Frederica Township area, who would be allowed to use and who would not be.
Well, so again, the, so the question before you all is whether the proposed use of a community dock as a permitted use is a reasonable request before the panel for the property that this rezoning request affects. The applicant has not made a firm determination as to who can and cannot use the property within the context, of course, of what I've said earlier, that this is intended to be an amenity of a residential development, the Frederica Estates, which is, you know, within the general Frederica Township area, but is contemplated as being a separate development within that area. So it's initially, they are certainly open to working with the Community Association to the extent it's feasible. And I would point out that, you know, there are a lot of lots in Frederica Township. And if anyone, any owner of a riverfront lot were to contemplate a dock amenity sufficient to satisfy everyone out there who wanted to use the dock amenity, it would be far greater than what we are proposing here. And the intensity of the use would likely be much greater than what applicant is proposing or willing to put out there. So before you is a very limited minor relocation of an existing use already permitted in the district to a portion of property on a different water body within the district. So, you know, just to reiterate, you know, the primary use here is intended to be for the Frederica Estates. The applicant has been very open with the Township, Frederica Township Community Association and the Frederica Development Group as to its intended use, and they are in constant contact. Again, they all have to play in the same area. So I hope that answers your question.
Not really.
I think what it is, the Frederica Estates lots are the ones combined with use at this time. Is that right, Commissioner?
That's what I understood, is the new area that we recently allowed change on. It's what they're contemplating currently. But I guess I could.
Any other questions of applicant? All right, I think Commissioner Duncan, are you on? You'll let us know?
Yes, I'm on, Commissioner.
Any other questions of applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. And this time, we'll open up a public hearing for anyone who would like to come up to speak in favor of this application. If you'll come forward, identify yourself.
There's no one in the room to speak to that.
All right. If there's anybody who can come up and speak against the application, if you'll come forward. Is there anybody there?
Not for this item.
All right, okay, thank you. Public hearing is closed this time. Commissioners, what is your will? On this ZM 4790.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. I recommend approval of the proposed zoning decision as presented.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Who's second and first?
Bryce Brock.
Commissioner Torres?
Torres.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, I will call the roll and you will say aye or nay on this motion. Aye if you're for it. Commissioner Brock?
Aye.
Mr. DiPulito?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Rooks? Mr. Torres?
Aye.
Mr. Usri?
Aye.
Mr. Willis?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous. All right, thank you. All right. Next item is TA 4763, Building Heights on St. Simon's Island Ordinance Amendment. County initiated request to amend Glen County's zoning ordinance, provided the maximum heights of any building on St. Simon's Island should not exceed 35 feet, provided for exceptions to the height limit on certain properties on resort residential, to amend the definition of building height. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Lee, Planning Manager. This is the county-initiated text amendment to the zoning code. And you may recall, a few weeks back, there was a joint work session with the Board of Commissioners, and this was one of your topics. This building height change would only apply on St. Simon's Island. There is a revision to the definition of building height, that a lot of that is really kind of cleaning that up and clarifying it to make sure it conforms with our FEMA regulations and our flood damage prevention ordinance. Also, part of this is a restriction to building heights on St. Simon's that throughout the island, including plan development texts, building height would be limited to 35 feet. And the only exemptions would be along Ocean Boulevard within, I'm sorry. So the restriction would be 35 feet throughout the island. The only exception would be resort residential that could stay at 45 feet unless it is along Ocean Boulevard. So Ocean Boulevard properties that are in resort residential would also be limited to 35 feet. There is the explanation changes and the ordinance that was included in your packet. And so here, here is the proposed amendment that is before you tonight. There was a public comment that was received prior to this meeting from Mr. Preston Kirkendall. The concern there is regarding forest agricultural zoning and the 45 feet. And that was the only one that was received prior to this meeting. I'm sorry, no, there was a second comment from Mr. George Ragsdale. His concerns was in regard to the building height definition, and then also regarding non-conforming buildings, how those would be handled. non-conforming buildings, how those would be handled. So this would be a public hearing tonight, and there are proposed actions that, that are on this screen. Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Cap Fendig is here this evening. He has been the sponsor of this amendment, so I know he wanted to present and discuss with the IPC regarding this amendment. So I'm happy to answer any questions at this time, or if we want to turn it over to Commissioner Fending.
Do you have any, Commissioners, have any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Chair, I have, I have one, one question about the building height definition, and I think it's fairly simple question. What is my understanding of the definition? The only thing of substance that has changed is the one-foot freeboard that we're currently that we're allowed now to measure the height from. Is that, is that what's changed, Ms. Lee? Is that, is that the, the crux of it?
Yeah, yes, are there, yeah, there was some other kind of cleanup, but yeah, in terms of a substantial change, yeah, that includes that one-foot freeboard that, that you're aware is, is part of our flood damage prevention ordinance now. So this, this accounts for that. And I don't know, our attorney, Mr. Worley, is there anything more on, on that?
Right, right, and, and as I understand it, currently, currently, we, we are measuring building height according to this definition is, as I recall, I know there's been some, some discussion about the, the freeboard elevation and how we measure. And currently, I know we have allowed measurement from the freeboard for our building permits. And so really, this is, this is really no change from what is currently being done by the building department, as I understand.
That is correct, exactly. We have been using this definition and this, this codifies it and incorporates it into our code officially.
Thank you.
I got a question for Will. I see that in section B, Sea Island's being removed from this definition. Does that mean Sea Island can build to whatever height they want to?
They will be able to build to whatever height the, a particular property is zoned at. Whatever the height limitation is in that zoning district, they will be able to build to that height.
Okay, so I guess we're not worried about the density on St., on Sea Island. Okay, thank you, Will.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, Commissioner Fendig, if you'd like to come up and make your presentation, please?
Well, thank you, everyone. Certainly appreciate you being here tonight to hear this out. And your, your role for filtering applications, changes, variances is vitally important to the quality of St. Simons. And I know how much time it takes, and I want to thank you for being a part of this. When I decided to run for Island Commissioner, I did so pretty quietly and began to really canvas my current island population, what were their concerns for the future going forth. And, you know, we really haven't had much discussion about density. The interesting thing is, is Commissioner Torres may remember, I had a great meeting with his granddad, and Michael was present, and we talked about roads, properties, density. You know, their, their development on the north end is a, a choice to reduce density that they're doing. They could have put more houses on the north end, done a lot, and they plan to phase that development and, and help with density going out there. And, and that's kind of the concept that we now have to take islandwide. The island's going to continue to grow as long as it's allowed to, whatever dimension it's allowed to. That's because it's market-driven, it's development-driven, and we currently have no real restraint, you know, for the future density of St. Simons. The, the message, as you know, is we're struggling with roads. We're, we're not going to be able to expand the capacity of roads. You know, it's going to be very difficult to do that. We can make efficiency improvements in the flow of traffic, but even then, we've reached that point in our history as an island on the why of the road. Are we going to continue on going with basically density not being addressed, struggling with traffic? Or are we going to take this opportunity at this moment, which I'm challenging our community and you as planning commission to, to consider this issue of how to begin to restrain density? And, and this conceptually brings forth the best of the conversation that I've had with a lot of different people, you know, people that oppose it, people that are for it, but basically having the conversations and trying to format, format that into an ordinance now. Because as you know, St. Simons is now experiencing what I call the gold rush again that happened in the seventies. And, and that is the, the demand because of COVID and short-term rentals is taking away the sanctity of neighborhoods. And, and, and the goal of buyers and developers now is to maximize the full use of a property to be rented out. And I know that's true, and it's happening all across the island, all up at the north end, because every day, probably nobody on this island spends more time with a visitor and locals with their families visiting than I do on my boat tours, on my trolley tours in the heat of the summer. I may do four or five tours in an hour and a half. And we talk a lot, and of course, I'm telling them what they're seeing around, but I ask them questions. Ninety-five, maybe ninety-eight percent of the people that were on my vehicles and boats this year told me they were in short-term rentals. And, and these were families of twelve and fifteen people, you know, going on. And, and I know that every real estate agent knows that they'd love to have good property to sell because it'd go in a heartbeat. And the majority of those people are buying it for the short-term rentals. So they're maxing whatever capacity we allow. So it's, it's a density issue. You drive these roads, all of you do every day, and, you know, it's the future. You, it's where, where are we going with our future? I've traveled extensively, had the privilege by boat. I know Mr. Torres has traveled a lot. The waterfront's almost, almost every island community from Key West to Maine. And, and I've seen what the unbridled restraint does to an island and waterfront community, and it's going to continue. Fortunately, we do have a forty-five-foot height restriction in the RR district. And one time that got exceeded to five floors, and we were able to pull it back. But the bigger the box in the years going forward that is open, the more we're going to suffer as a quality community. So that's the purpose of this. It's one part of a package that can impact the quality of certain areas, specifically like St. Simon's Village, specifically like Ocean Boulevard, where the, the, the RR district will roll down there. And, and what's left there from the elementary school going south is all going to pull out on Ocean Boulevard. Ocean Boulevard is a major thoroughfare for the island. It's not a dinky road. It connects the village to East Beach. That's a particular area. And, and just the development push in a lot of areas, especially with the PD texts on the north end, yeah, people are renting on the north end, I can tell you they are. And, and we have issues up there that allow forty-five feet, and there's five hundred to six thousand, at least specifically identified home sites that are going to be built at some point coming forth. They're probably going to be built with rentals in mind. And you're going to have, you know, if you figure the two and a half or two cars per house, you're talking about for sure, twelve, thirteen thousand cars are going to dump coming down Frederica Road to the Sea Island Road intersection, trying to get north and south and through the island. So this is our opportunity as a community to say, you know, good is good, but we don't want more. And, and there, this is one of the packages that will help that effort. And I'm glad to open and ask any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Fendig. Anybody have questions, Commissioner Fendig?
Well, thank you for allowing me to bring this forth to you with the support of my Commissioners, not just me, and bring it to you for your deliberation and modification and wisdom. It's your island, it's our future.
I, I got a question for you. Why, why exclude Sea Island from this restriction?
Well, I think it's picking choose battles. I would like Sea Island to do that. You know, just honestly, there's a lot of wealth, and, you know, that's, that's a separate island, so I wanted to start with, what do you call it, the lowest hanging fruit? And, and see if we can get this through, and maybe that we can talk Sea Island into the future of embracing this concept. I mean, you know what it looks like up and down the east coast, so you know the potential.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? All right, is there anybody in the room that's here for the public hearing to speak in favor of this application before, besides, Commissioner Fendig? See you none, Mr. Chairman? Okay. Go, state your name, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joey Strength, I'm an attorney with Hunter McLean. And I, I know there's not a large crowd here, and I wasn't sure whether to speak in favor or against the, this proposal, because I think that I am here on behalf of Sea Island Company, that had been mentioned before, and there's really a lot that Sea Island Company would support about this proposal, in the sense that they believe that things that can help prevent the overdevelopment of St. Simons is appropriate, that reduction in density is appropriate. You may recall the last time I was before you, when we had the rezoning for the Frederica SSI FR property, it was really the first time in decades that a property owner had come forward, if ever, and voluntarily reduced density on a parcel from over seven hundred units to a, a reduction into the three or four hundred units. And, and, and that very large reduction in density is something that helps alleviate traffic and other concerns for St. Simons. I would say that that's the spirit in which the company is operating. And so the, the desire and sort of goal of this ordinance is something that is to be commended. We do think, however, that the inclusion of impacts on planned development texts should take a little more consideration. And for that purpose, would ask that, that like resort residential in significant parts of the island that are excluded from this ordinance, that planned development texts would also be excluded. There are a number of planned development texts on St. Simons that were, you know, a planned development text is a text that's created specifically for a parcel, and that takes into consideration the uniqueness of the property, the size of the property, other zoning limitations that might be included in the planned development text to, to, to affect proper development for a parcel. And, and, and in those texts are texts that Sea Island Company and others have, you know, master planned off of, and with a long-term view of what their future development plans might look like, this change could have a material adverse impact on that. And so the request would be to say that we're supportive of the general concept, but we think further study is appropriate for how it might impact planned development texts. And if the planned development text could be carved out at his exemption, I think that's something that would be, address some of these concerns.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Forward, what, to some degree? Anybody else? Is there anybody there who'd like to speak against this application? All right, see you done. We'll turn over Commissioners up. I'd like to make a comment. I had a conversation with Commissioner Fendig, and he knows how I feel about this, and I applaud him for trying to, to work on this. And to me, this is, is not as simple as we wanted to think it to be. I'm opposed to a blanket thirty-five foot across the whole island. I think, as Mr. Strength alluded to, there's a PD text that already in place that addressed the height, and the height's at forty-five feet. And I agree with Mr. Kirkendall on Hampton Point, that what that would do would spread out some houses and create less green space. So we're concerned about green space, but if you reduce the height there, they're going to build a bigger house, and they're going to spread it out. And they'll still get what they want in terms of what they want to build. So I respect Commissioner Fendig on this, and I think there's a way we can accomplish what he wants to do, but I personally do not think that a blanket thirty-five foot height across the whole island is the way to go.
Mr. Chairman, it's Patrick here. Could I make a comment, please?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I think we could probably have a long discussion on this tonight, and, and I think we do need to have further study on this. We were not able to get into this discussion very much in the public, sorry, in the workshop, joint workshop meeting we had with the BOC and the mainland planning commission. So I would, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to defer this to some point into the future.
Would you like to make a motion to defer to, and I'll ask, to have a date certain, but also to have a work session regarding this? Would that be part of your motion?
Yes.
You know, let's, let's, well, let's go ahead and get the motion on the table, then we can discuss about that. Go ahead, make your motion, if you'll state it again.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make the motion to recommend or defer action on the ordinance amendment to a date certain, but also have a workshop prior to that.
Commissioners, this is Will Worley. You need to enumerate what date you want to defer this to.
Okay.
Whether it's the next meeting, some other date that you choose, you need to specify which date you're talking about.
And Commissioners, your October date would be October nineteenth, and your November is November sixteenth.
Speaking of the workshop prior to?
Yeah.
This, this is Commissioner Brock. I, I feel like October nineteenth would be a little premature to, to have a, a workshop that was efficient to make decisions by October nineteenth.
Okay, so do I still have the floor?
Yes, go ahead.
So I'd like to amend my motion to a date certain, to the November meeting for deferral, but to have a workshop prior to that. It, it doesn't necessarily need to be the next scheduled IPC meeting. So Will, help me out.
Yeah, that's fine. You don't, you don't have to specify the date of the work session.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear any of that.
I, I said, you don't have to specify the date of the work session, just the date that you wanted to defer consideration of the item to. I said, you don't have to specify the date of the work session, just the date that you wanted to defer consideration of the item to.
Okay, let me restate it then. I'd like to I offer a motion to defer the action of the ordinance amendment to the November IPC meeting.
Against the rules I'm saying.
That's the 16th, is that correct? November 16th. Commissioner Rooks, can you just meet?
And further, and further ask for a workshop prior or prior to that next public hearing.
Commissioner Rooks, do you agree with that addition to that motion that there'll be a workshop scheduled prior to that meeting? Ms. Levin, you want to read that motion back?
Yeah, I will. Commissioner Patrick Duncan has a motion to defer this application to the November 16th of the Planting Commission meeting and to have a workshop prior to the November IPC meeting.
All right. There's a second in the motion. Is there any discussion?
I have had a little bit of discussion. I think, I think we need a little direction as to what we're expecting to accomplish between now and November. I think it's important that we get a good understanding of which, exactly which properties are affected. Not, not just a general observation of what maybe PD texts. Not all PD texts would be affected. I know there, there are some that would not be. But but specifically which ones are, in other words, I know for a fact that that Seabombs West, for instance, would not be affected. I'm not sure about Seabombs East, but there are some that aren't affected. So it'd be good for us to understand exactly which properties that we are talking about. Perhaps staff could, could help us with that. Also, this is, this is just a housekeeping item. In, in this amendment, we're talking about changing heights 35 feet. But you inadvertently remove the number of stories that would be allowed in a 45 foot structure. It's basically says there is, there is no story limitation. Currently, we have three, so that's something going forward. We want to look at as well.
Ms. Lee, could you get that information to us prior to that work session that Commissioner Usery requested?
Yes, so what I, what I heard was, I think we can, you know, do this through, you know, a GIS map. You know, which, which properties in terms of, you know, zoning districts as well as the PDs that are affected. I know we've done some of that research already, so we can provide that to you.
Right, and I think, I think, I think what we need to understand is, is which, which gives us, which, which areas give us the most, the most bang for our buck in terms of limiting density? In other words, you know, maybe up there at Hampton, it's not so important as much as it is closer into the village. I don't know. That's, that's, that's what we need to understand.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to get your information prior to the workshop or prior to the November meeting?
Prior to the workshop. You know, we want that information readily available. Any other question? All right, we have a motion and we have a second. And at this time, I'll call the roll. We'll take if you vote aye or nay against, on the motion. Commissioner Brock?
Aye.
Mr. DiPulito?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Rooks?
Aye.
Mr. Torres?
Aye.
Mr. Usery?
Aye.
Miss Wiggles, aye. The vote was unanimous to defer. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You're, get away, Commissioner.
All right, I just want to thank all of you. This is the beginning of a conversation that we need to have. Some ideas have to come forth and then be dealt with and massaged and looked at. And that's the challenge that I'm putting before y'all because the future of our island is now in your hands to work this ordinance through to the right balance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is TA 4764 Beach Dune Protection Ordinance Amendment. County initiated request to amend the Glen County's own ordinance to amend section 727 Beach and Dune Protection to reduce the development setback line from 40 feet to 25 feet for areas with inactive stable dune sequence to increase the development setback line from 20 feet to 25 feet for areas without inactive stable dune sequence. And to move some conditional uses to permitted uses. Ms. Lee?
Thank you. This is TA 4764 Beach and Dune Protection Ordinance Amendment. This was another topic that was on your joint work session with the Board of Commissioners a few weeks back. And you may recall that the background to this coming before you was for quite a, quite a while now, we've been hearing from IPC members, Board of Commissioner members, as well as applicants in the community and those working as agents for the applicants. That the process of the county, you know, has in its code is duplicative to what the DNR requires. So because the DNR does require a zoning compliance letter from the county, these projects have to come through the county for conditional use permits, which is, you know, several month process before they can even make application to the DNR. So it extends that time period that they do need to, to spend, you know, working on permitting for their projects. And because the DNR had amended and revised their regulations this past year, our, our county code actually is now more restrictive than DNR. So some of these changes are to align the county code with the Department of Natural Resources in terms of the setbacks. The other element that we're looking at in addition to aligning the setback requirements is right now, we do go before the Board of Commissioners for each property that is, that is along the shoreline to establish the development setback line. And so we do put this on Board of Commissioner agendas. And the county, the county commission does have to take a, you know, consider that and take a vote to establish the development setbacks. That is done on every project, whether they need a conditional use permit or not. They have to get that before getting any kind of a building permit or any other permit, you know, from our office. So, so the change that is being proposed is to move that from having to be a county commission decision to a staff decision. So staff in consultation with DNR, we always require a survey as well as the DNR jurisdictional determination. And, and so staff will use that in conjunction with DNR to look at the development setback to determine if that meets our code. So that is something we're proposing. And then additionally, some of the comments that came out of the work session were to look at some of those conditional uses and, and determine whether some of those may be more, maybe, maybe appropriate as permitted uses. You know, and so what we focused on was landscaping. So what we heard was some of the native landscaping, landscaping elements, hard and soft scape, some of those may be appropriate to be permitted uses instead of conditional uses. So that is what we have proposed in this amendment that's before you. And here is a copy of what was provided to you in your packet. This is the proposed amendment. And next, changes. We did receive a public comment from Mr. George Ragsdale. He had some, he was fine with the development setback line shifting or changing to align with the state. But there were concerns about the, some of the uses that are currently conditional that would be permitted uses if the changes adopted. And these are your possible actions. And I'm happy to answer questions and Mr. Worley is, is here to answer questions about this draft as well.
Okay, Commissioner, any questions of staff?
Okay, I do. This is Michael Torres. Can you tell me exactly what the Beach and Dune District is?
So, so what it, what it currently entails?
Where's that, what areas that covers the district? Is that the entire Glen County or?
No, so we do have basically a boundary. So I'm trying to, don't know if it shows in here because this just says the development setback. Yeah, let me just pull up that information for you and I can read that off a second.
Okay. Yeah, Beach and Dune Protection District. I've never, honestly, no one has ever, have seen a map of that.
Commissioner Torres, the, the district is defined in 727.2. And it's the, that, you know, there's a separate definition for Area A and Area B. Depending upon whether there's a established active or stable dune sequence or whether there's not one. So 727.2 of the ordinance is where the, the boundaries of the district are defined.
Can y'all, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. Can you tell me what it is?
Yeah, I'm going to pull it up and I'll try to share it on the screen.
It'd be helpful to know what we're considering changing.
While she's looking, Mr. Chairman, may I comment?
Sure, go ahead.
This was another thing that came through the commissioners. And we sent to y'all is obviously the first thing it was the Johnson Rocks, the center of the Johnson Rocks, and then on around East Beach. A lot of different applications and then on Sea Island. We had properties, the setback line was 40 feet, but the DNR has recently changed that to 25 feet jurisdiction. So the goal of the commissions and sending this forward was to align that district 25 feet to match the DNR setback line. Then the other discussion was, well, should the county even weigh in on it? Just let it go straight over to the DNR? But the feedback from citizens and neighbors and some of the commissioners was that, you know, this gives an opportunity in those unusual situations of concern that neighbors or the public would have an opportunity to weigh in on a particular application. So that's, that was the gist of why we were bringing this forward.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lee, did you find it?
Yes, sir. So Commissioners, do you see on the screen section 727 Beach and Dune Protection? So section 727.2 is what the district actually is. So this is Commissioner Torres's question of what exactly are we, we looking at? It's basically two, two kind of thresholds. So first, you know, first to staff, we look to see if a property even falls within the district. And then if we check that box and say, yes, it does fall in the district, then at that point, we go to kind of that second step with, which Commissioner Finn Dig is referring to is about, okay, well, now is your setback. You know, 40 foot is the code reads now, or is it the 20 foot setback? And then we kind of go from there. So under Area A, which is a shorefront area that has a active stable dune sequence extending from the mean high watermark, we look at an area between basically native trees that are 20 feet in height. And that's from the, so basically from the mean high watermark to a native tree that's 20 feet in height. And that does go back to the, the older DNR regulations that did look at where a native tree was. Or align 50 feet landward of any seawall structure. So so basically that would be from mean high watermark to 50 feet landward of a seawall structure. So it's a pretty, pretty big area that, that most of our, you know, shorefront covers. And then and then the second part, if you're in Area B, is a shorefront area that does not have inactive stable dune sequence. So these are the properties that have you have the, have the rocks and have some kind of a seawall. And then this is where we do look at the native trees or an inhabitable building. And then, or align 50 feet landward of any seawall structure. So that's basically the, the gist of it as we look at mean high watermark. And then we pretty much go go 50 feet landward of a seawall structure or to a native tree or inhabitable building. So, so pretty much everything along our store, our shorefront falls into the district. I, I know I've worked here and been working with this. I don't think there's been anything on our on our beachfront that has not fallen into the district. But there are some properties that maybe they fall in the district, but they don't meet that second threshold of really having a development setback that really impacts the development. In some cases, a development setback may actually be very far down the beach, you know, close to the, to the where the waves are breaking, very far from maybe a property line.
Okay, just for further clarification, shorefront is limited to oceanfront? Does it include, say, tidal lakes?
So that, that might be more of a technical question with, with DNR. Anything that is marsh, though, is all under the Coastal Marshals Protection Act, and this would not impact that. So anything that's Coastal Marshals Protection Act, and that's really, you know, kind of when we look at where does it fall in this kind of list of things we're looking at, really the very first one is we get that jurisdictional determination from DNR. And because there, there are properties that have both. We've seen properties that both have Shoreline Protection Act as well as Coastal Marshals Protection Act just because of where they, you know, where they sit with, you know, with marsh and and ocean, you know, coming kind of in the same vicinity.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have, I have some other comments, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, you know, the most stable dune is a moving target. We've seen on St. Simons in recent years that the dunes, especially along East, East Beach have, are starting to grow. I dare say in the, in the not too distant future, the, what we currently call the stable, most seaward stable dune is going to move. And it'll move seaward. And at, at that point, we, we stand to gain a lot of potentially developable land that we, we currently look at as, as nothing but a dune, a dune field. My, my concern is, is this, this doesn't really help that. It, in fact, just following the, the DNR's recommendations or to coincide with their, their recommendations, I, I don't think it's necessarily wise for the island going, going forward. I'm not so sure exactly what the answer is, but I know, I know, for instance, years ago, when we were doing work in Florida, they actually had a development setback line that was a surveyed line that, that, that did not move. It ran around the coast of Florida. I'm not sure what it is now, but, but I kind of wonder if, if perhaps that's something we ought to look at here. So rather than having a line that, that is based on what the DNR has, we ought to have our own line based on what Glen County thinks should, should work for us. It may initially coincide with the DNR line today, for instance. But in, in time, in time going forward, as we gain more accreted land, which by the way, is kind of unusual situation on barrier islands now. We're very fortunate in that regard. But it may be that, that we could come up with a survey line and say, this is Glen County's development setback line. And it may, it may or may not coincide with the DNR line. That's just an idea. It's a thought. It's totally different from, from what this, from what this says here now. But I think it's something we ought to consider, especially in light of what's going on on East Beach now and also in front of the Coast Guard Station and all the way down to Massagale Park. One other, one other, one other comment, just based on what's written, if we do go forward with this. I think that under 727.4 permitted uses, we've, we've included decks. Decks as a permitted use. I would permitted use seaward of the development setback line. I would suggest we take decks out. That's a broad, that's a broad term. Decks can mean all sorts of things. I think the other items in that category, landscape walls, retaining walls, a more engineering considerations. And then landscape, of course, is something that could not be necessarily a permanent, permanent thing. But I would suggest if we did go forward with this, we take decks out and make it, maybe put it in conditional uses.
All right, let me ask a, this is a question that two Commissioners read. Basically, what you're saying is that the land continues to accrete there on the, on the beach there in the the beach there in the Massangale Park area and the East Beach and the Coast Guard Station area and all that down toward King and Prince. Conservably in the future, could condominiums be built between condos now and this new setback line?
That's, that's the question. I think, I think they could, Mr. Chair.
So that's something to consider. I don't know how everybody thinks about that, but, and I'm not sure if it could happen at all with those condos that are already in place, if they were allowed, but that would be a pretty ugly fight.
Right, but there, there are some privately, there are a few, not, not very many privately owned parcels that are down, that are down there in that resort residential district that are on the, on, on the beach, that you could go forward of where currently the development setback line is and actually put something further out on the beach than what's currently going to be allowed. That's if we continue to have, we have accretion. My concern is that we should stabilize it. I, I think, you know, DNR has had trees and now we got, trees was a way to determine the development setback line and now it's, now we've got a different way of measuring it. And I just, I just wonder for the benefit of the island, if we shouldn't come up with a way to, to have a line that we draw and say, this is, this is our line, this is as far as we're ever going to go. And going forward, we won't go beyond that line.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, Commissioner Torres? Did you raise your hand?
I'm sorry, I was pointing at Brock has her hand raised.
Any other, any other questions, staff? All right, this is a public hearing, so anybody who is in favor of this application, if you'll come forward and state your name and make your presentation, I'm not sure if there's anybody in the room except Commissioner Fendig. All right, seeing none, anybody opposed to this? All right, commissioners?
Someone's coming up.
Is it, is that, okay.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, it's a little odd. Good evening Chairman Willis, Chairman, Commissioner Fendig and Island Planning Commissioners. My name is Alice Kies and I'm the Vice President of Coastal Conservation with the organization 100 Miles. We are a coastal advocacy group based here in Glen County and here in Brunswick, right around the corner from, from where I am. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding the changes proposed for this Beach and Dune Development Setback Line. As y'all have just discussed, the, the definition of this district is defined by areas that are subject to storm surge, subject to damage from ocean activities. And setbacks serve a very important function in these particular areas. They act as buffers to facilitate not only water quality protection, but habitat protection as well as a protection of the people and the structures that are built in that district. The Beach and Dune Protection District of the county code upholds the Georgia Shore Protection Act, as y'all just discussed. And that act was established in part to sustain the function and the form of these setbacks in order for them to provide the reliable protections for people and wildlife. I understand Commissioner Fendig, the, the need to change the setback from the landward toe of the most landward dune from 40 feet to 25 feet to match state law, but from a practical standpoint, from a public safety standpoint and from a scientific standpoint, I cannot recommend it as being a wise decision. With sea level rise accelerating, especially in the southeastern coast of the United States, more intense hurricanes and storm surges affecting our communities, we should be increasing, not decreasing these setbacks so they can continue to serve their function. Decreasing the setback will also allow for more structures to be built along the shorelines that have the potential, and as we've seen in previous years, they break apart and release flying material and debris into the air. And that debris also could get pushed inland when storm surges occur and wash ashore. I have a report here that I'd be happy to share that was released by a military expert panel discussing the need for more protective shoreline buffers and setbacks like the 40 foot one that y'all have and that we have in place here in Glen County. Department of Defense installations all over the country are enhancing these precautions that are known challenges in coastal communities, and we should too. My organization does not recommend reducing the setback from 40 feet to 25 feet as a matter of public safety and protection. The second point I would like to raise is related to the proposed changes to the permitted uses, which seem to be contrary to the commissioner's interest in consistency with state law. The proposed changes will without doubt cause major confusion among residents, builders and others interested in working along the shoreline, because the proposed amendment is actually contrary to the Shore Protection Act. The Shore Protection Act, Section 125237, states very clearly that no person shall construct or erect a shoreline engineering activity or engage in any land alteration which alters the natural topography or vegetation in an area within the jurisdiction, the state jurisdiction of 25 feet back, except in accordance with the terms and conditions of a permit issued in accordance with this part. So that basically means that the state will only allow shoreline engineering and land alteration within that 25 feet with permission from DNR or permission from the state protection, the Shore Protection Committee. The creation of docks, landscape walls, retaining walls and landscaping using any kind of plant material is considered engineering and certainly land altering and is rightfully included in the local code as conditional use dependent on permission from the state. If the local change were to go, if the proposed local change were to go into effect, you would be send the message that engineering and land alteration of all these types is okay without a permit. And may go, and individuals may go so far as to not even check with state authorities before embarking on these activities. But in fact, the state law states very clearly that you must receive a permit to affect the areas of this 25 foot setback. Avoid unnecessary confusion, destruction of the very useful and needed setback area and the potential damage of private property and lands. Maintain decks, fences, landscape walls, retaining walls, planting and landscaping as conditional uses, subject to permission from the state. So to close, I encourage you not to recommend to the county commission the changes to the setback distance of the landward, from the landward toe of the landward most dune and do not recommend the changes to the permitted uses in the Beach and Dune Protection District in the county code.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir. For the opportunity.
You're welcome. Are any other, like to come think against, against in favor of this, I think is what it is? I don't think so, okay. All right, commissioners? Commissioner Usher?
Can you, this is Bryce, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Commenting on Commissioner Usher talking about decks, that verbiage obviously could, could mean many things. Maybe that should be changed to, to, to any items horizontal that are flush with grade like a paver, instead of using the word deck, something that would have to be at grade as opposed to a deck that could be potentially considered as something, you know, elevated above, above grade.
All right. Now, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to defer this until the, until the November meeting. Perhaps we could workshop this at the same time we workshop the height, the height ordinance revision. I, I think there's some unanswered questions here and I think, I think we should take the long view of this particular ordinance and not necessarily just, just make a change because the DNR made a change. I think there's some things here that could affect, as some of the things that Commissioner Fendig is trying to accomplish, which is trying to, trying to maintain, trying to control density. I would hate to do something here or miss an opportunity, I guess is what I'm trying to say, is to, is to control a little bit of density and also to understand some of these uses that we have currently allowed in this to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Okay, there's a motion to defer to the November 16th meeting. Is there a second?
One.
Mr. Brooks, seconded the motion. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I, I don't understand what this has to do with density in this, in this, the permitted uses.
I think, I think it's not necessarily, I don't think it's necessarily the permitted uses that are in fact, it's the fact that, that in the future, using this formula, if we could gain developable land that we currently do not have because, because of the staple dune moving seaward, that's my.
I feel like that would be a separate conversation, that this is, this is applying to what's existing now.
Mr. Chair.
Developing.
Mr. Chair. Wait a minute, let Commissioner Brock finish, please. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know who that was. Thank you. Commissioner Brock, do you have your comments?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I guess I'm just confused because the accreting land and that being developed by, you know, specific original homeowners that, that may still be paying, you know, property tax on, on something that they lost many years ago, that may or may not in the future have the potential to redevelop. I feel like that is a completely separate situation and discussion from the one that we have in front of us right now.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Duncan?
Never mind, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion before I call the votes?
Yeah, Commissioner Torres, I have to agree with Commissioner Brock as well. I think if someone's been paying taxes on accreted land and then they have the chance to, to develop it, that they should be given the right to develop it as well.
All right.
But wouldn't all of it, if we defer and have a workshop on it and get all the pertinent information, wouldn't all of this come out during that time? A better understanding?
That's to go, get a better understanding of the ordinance.
Right.
But I, but I feel like we're talking about two separate things right now. I think, I think we, I think we've taken the accreted land and the potential use for that accreted land or development of that accreted land and lumped it in with, you know, standard practices that are aligned with, with the DNR. And, and that I, and I do not feel like this should be deferred. I feel like these are two separate situations.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Call the question, Mr. Chair.
Yep, all right. On the motion to defer to November 16th, Commissioner Brock?
Nay.
All right. Commissioner DiPulito?
Aye.
Was that aye?
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Commissioner Rooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Nay.
Commissioner Urquhart?
Aye.
Commissioner Willis?
Aye.
Voted five for the motion, two against. All right, I'll converse with the staff about potential work session dates. I, I think it would be appropriate and Will, maybe you can help us out here that we have this work session just for the IPC on these two items because they really don't affect the mainland. I know the mainland, whatever comes up out of this, the mainland would have to approve. But is that allowable, where we can just work by ourselves?
Yes, sir, you can have a special called meeting of the IPC to have a work session to discuss these, these two.
All right. When is the restriction on in-person meetings with the county? When does that end? Do you have a date?
The direction that we've gotten from our, one of our co-county managers is that for the remainder of this year, we are planning to keep public meetings virtual, so that, that's the current direction, but that could change.
So we'd have to be a virtual meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, all right. Well, I appreciate everybody's diligence and all this, this is not easy to do and I appreciate your patience and if there's no other business.
Chairman, I would just like, I just like to tell Commissioner Fendig, we really appreciate all you're, you're doing for St. Simon's and I know it's an uphill battle and I know it's, you don't get a lot of appreciation for it, we do appreciate you just putting forth the effort.
Well, thank you. You're a great group to start this process with.
All right, thank you for coming, Commissioner Fendig, and thank everybody for pulling in on this, all right? We stand adjourned. All right.